I call to order the Gladstone City Council work session for January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's five thirty P M. The Governor's Executive Order twenty dash sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. The city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff and public all have access to this meeting. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally. And public comment is not a part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda business from the audience nor business from the council. The only item to be discussed is the I N I, which stands for infiltration inflow. Source identification and rehabilitation project related to the city infrastructure. Amy, could you please call the role?
Counselor Ripley. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Here.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd is absent. Counselor Gollington here. Mayor Stempel.
Here, could everyone please stand for the edge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to public. Public stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we are going to start with one A. Which is that I N I source identification and rehabilitation project related to the city infrastructure. Public Works Director Darren Cana Peroli, City Administrator Becky Beth and Rob Lee of Leeway Engineering Solutions. It's going to provide us with an overview of the investigation and reduction plan. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. That is what we're here tonight to talk about is our infrastructure, what's causing the problems citywide. And you're going to learn a lot about infiltration, which is groundwater that enters into our sanitary sewers. And inflow, which is the rainwater that flows into our sanitary sewers. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Public Works Director Cana Peroli, and he will introduce our guest tonight to give a presentation about the report that you have in your packet.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. As many of you know, the city has a longstanding history with the D E Q pertaining to the sewer overflows into the Clackamas River. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, city council authorized. And inner and entered into a mutual agreement order or an M A O with the state of Oregon to settle D E Q violations. The M A O has six requirements with deadlines that need to be met in order to be in compliance. We have met the first two requirements. We're here to talk about the third requirement, which is to complete the I N I study and submit it to D E Q. This needs to be completed by August of this year. So to go over the I N I report, we have Rob Lee here from Leeway Engineering. This is the consultant that did the report for us, and we will turn the presentation over to Rob.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Appreciate the chance to to talk as an engineer. I know sometimes it's easy to dive way too much of the details. So Darren, I'm trusting in you to help me to pull up anytime I do that. I'll try to keep it at a fairly high level. I am going to try to share my screen here. Can folks let me know if this comes up okay?
I see it.
Looks good. Thank you.
Okay. So as Darren had said, we got involved with this project about a year and a half ago. We proposed on some work that Clackamas West had was investigating as part of this regional program. I'm going to start off with just kind of the basics. The the basic definitions of infiltration and inflow. I know it's been a discussion topic for the city for a while now, but there is a difference there. Infiltration is really what we talk about in the industry as groundwater that gets into our collection system, our sanitary collection system. So it's ways that that water in the ground is seeping in and and finding its pathways into our sanitary systems, which are supposed to be ideally watertight, that they don't allow any of that groundwater to get in. And then there's inflow. Inflow is traditionally known as surface water that flows into the sanitary sewers. So that's typically water that ideally should never get into the sanitary sewers because they're going into our storm sewers. Those would be include places like catch basins or roof drains, things like that where water is sheeting on hard impervious surfaces and then finding their way somehow into our sanitary sewers, where traditionally they should go into our storm sewers. So those are the two sources of water, clean water that are getting into the collection system that are then finding their way down to the downstream pump stations and treatment facilities, all of which needs to be conveyed and treated, as well as just creating overflows or capacity issues in Gladstone system. A lot of these sources are private. In the two basins I'm going to talk about, around half of the pipings in the in the basin is owned by the city of Gladstone, and the other half is owned by private residences. And so you can just think about, well, all these different pathways that water, clean water is getting into the system during wet weather events. A lot of those those issues are due to the private side sources, whether they're broken, cracks in the laterals, whether they're uncapped cleanouts, whether they're roof drains, these are all private sources of clean water getting in. I I know this has been a topic for a while, but this really is a regional issue. And Gladstone, you are not alone. I've worked on I N I programs here in the Willamette Valley for the last thirteen years. Since I first moved here, there are a number of communities that D E Q is looking at trying to help have them address their excessive I N I or infiltration and inflow issues. These red basins, here we are in the city of Gladstone, these are the two basins that are the subject of this project. But all of these red areas were all areas identified by Clackamas West as needing rehabilitation because of excessive I N I. Many of some of these areas like this in particular, Happy Valley area, this Clackamas Basin, those are part of C C S D number one or Happy Valley. So areas that are owned and operated by by Clackamas West. So it's not just the member communities like Gladstone or West Lynn. But it's all aimed at this regional balanced investments. We can do everything we can to try to control I N I. At rehabbing pipes, removing private sources, the more we try to get out, the more it costs. And that just makes sense. Obviously, the the lowest hanging fruit is what we want to try to tackle. The same goes true for transport and treat. If we just upsize everything, if we upsize the treatment plants, the pump stations, all the piping, that comes at a tremendous cost. And and Clackamas West and looking at their regional system is focused on this. What's going to be the lowest total cost that is best for the region? One of the things that we're seeing is as we grow, I mean, Oregon, the Oregon market still continues to be a very hot demand place where people want to move to. We are seeing our infrastructure aging. We are seeing the effects of climate change. And then just as regulatory impacts increase, that we're trying to get out micro particles now out of our wastewater. That's all increasing treatment costs. So again, in seeking this cost effective removal, that's where the two Gladstone basins were identified as a high priority for the region. What we're calling here, this basin is all based on sanitary sewer numbers, but this is in essence the west basin and the east basin. Again, like I said, it's around thirteen miles of city owned sewers and around thirteen miles of laterals or private side sewers. So if you put it all together, that's twenty-six miles. If you ever, anyone here runs marathons, imagine just running along piping that long and all of that being problematic for the city. So how bad is it? I think that's kind of the question in front of us all today. We were able to evaluate the way these systems respond under a couple of different storm events that are pretty unique. Well, not that unique, but they give us really good indicators, and I stare at these all the time. So please stop me if I go too fast here. What we're looking at in these colored lines is pretty much a response to a flashy, high intense rain event that we had back in June, two thousand and nineteen. You know, as we all know who live here, we've got amazing summers, but once in a while we'll get this deluge in the middle of the summer. Very unusual, but when we get it, what it does is we we are able to have flow monitors that monitor the system's response. And here we are humming along. This is just our typical sanitary sewer pattern. People wake up in the morning, they pre-COVID, they all shower at the same time. And they go out and start their day. So we have our peak wastewater flows into the system, you know, right around that six, seven o'clock in the morning. And so that's what we're seeing here is that typical dry weather pattern of the way our sanitary sewers go. And then this high intensity rainfall hits and boom. It the flows in the west basin shoot up by a factor of eight. So it's going from this, the certain dry weather flow and then shooting up to a factor of eight. And then you can see here this lighter blue line, it stays elevated even after just this one short burst of rain. We had a second event that we looked at from April, two thousand and nineteen. Our springs are a lot wetter. The ground is more saturated, groundwater is up. And what we see here is again, those normal flows, a little bit more elevated because groundwater is seeping in. And then we get a big soaking rain event. And we can see how high the flows go up and they stay up for quite a while. At a peaking factor of over twelve. A typical new system might see somewhere around a peaking factor of two. An older system that is operating fairly well in western Oregon, somewhere around four. So when we have these basins that are eight or twelve, and these aren't even extreme, extreme events, Oregon regulates around the five year event. So this was not a five year event. It just shows the the extent of Gladstone's issues here. That's the west basin. I'm going to quickly go through the east basin unless there are any other questions. East basin. Again, same kind of pattern, actually much less groundwater that we're seeing getting in during the dry summer period. And then we get that flash storm to come through. This peaking factor wasn't nearly as bad, peaking factor of two. And then when we get over to the same April storm, though, what we see is again, a long, a high peaking factor, a rapid rise in the flows and then a sustained excessive flow until it drops down a matter of a week or two later. And then again, a peaking factor here of five and a half. So the east basin is not nearly as extreme as the west basin, but they're both problematic. So one of the ways that we try to find where all this clean water is getting in is we'll do what we call smoke testing. Basically, it's blowing a white vapor into the system. And we look for where smoke emissions or that vapor emissions come out. So we ended up testing based on the flow result in our analysis of how the system's responding to wet weather, and we say we need to test it all. So we tested all sixty-eight thousand linear feet of sewer main that vapor goes wherever water can go. So it's going up through cracks, it's going up into the private laterals, it's going up through roof drains. What the vendor found who helped us with this is two hundred and thirty-nine incidences. That's all these little colored dots you see here. They're different incidences or emissions. So two hundred and thirty-nine, which is around three times more than they typically see on a job. So this is a firm that goes around and does this type of work as their profession. And they were astounded by what they found in Gladstone. So you have a lot of of inflow sources. Smoke testing is really to find where that storm water, that rainwater is getting in. Just a couple of quick pictures. I'm going to throw them really quickly on. I got these as blowups later if if someone wants to look at them. But this is what you see when we do smoke testing. We found a number of cleanout caps that were missing, and you can just imagine if the ground is saturated in the spring or the winter time and all that water soaks up and a big rainstorm happens, how much water just drains through each one of these. Catch basins, parking lot drains. This happens to be a sanitary sewer crossing a creek. And here's smoke coming out right at the terminal end of that. We have roof drains that were smoking a number of these. So again, a lot of these are private property sources. But this is, if you could just envision when we get a big rainstorm, this is all clean water that is finding its way into Gladstone's system. We also inspected the sewers in Gladstone's system. And we again TV'd everything. Around a third of your system is what the industry would say are grade four or five. Five is the worst. Five says it has failed or is likely to fail in the next five years. And again, those are conservative numbers because no one wants to say, oh, it's going to fail in ten years and then it fails in five. But the the long and short of it is the city system has some severe structural issues as well. Lot of longitudinal cracks, broken, these are cracks, running along the pipe. We have places where we could see water shooting in to the pipe into the manholes. Lot of roots from trees that find their way into our sewers and create actual more structural problems. Here's just another sampling of some of the the critical defects that we saw. There have been some repairs that were done, but so that's what we're looking at here is a repair that was done, but the pipe continues to degrade and deteriorate. Water shooting in, holes forming because places of the sewer are just breaking and those chunks of the pipe are actually falling in. So we've got a system here that is definitely showing its age. By the time when the sewers were originally installed, they typically were designed to have a fifty year life expectancy, and we are way past that. So that this is not unusual for what the Northwest is seeing nowadays. Just graphically, just so you folks could see where some of these problems are. Anything in red was the grade five, anything in yellow was the grade four. Like I said, around a little over a third of your system was in poor condition. There was definitely more red and yellow or grade four or five sewers in the west basin than in the east basin. So this screen capture of just, these are just the sewer mains as well. We did not inspect any of the private laterals. And then here's the east basin. But it is kind of scattered throughout. There wasn't any particular clusters. It wasn't a single home builder that just did a bad job putting their sewers in the ground. It's just a a system that's showing its age. Okay. So what do you do? What's facing Gladstone now, I think, is kind of the at the core of it and what D E Q is requiring. Based on the my reading of the M A O, that Gladstone's current mutual agreement and order. We're on step three, as Darren had talked about. One of the next steps and key steps is disconnection of those inflow sources. It's those catch basins, it's those roof leaders, it's the missing cleanout caps, it's getting the places where what we always call, to use the old cliche, the lowest hanging fruit. Grab that. It's the cheapest way to get the the big sources of of clean water out of your system. That's what's overwhelming the downstream Gladstone pump station, and that's what's causing issues overflowing down into into the Clackamas. So after the disconnect of inflow sources, we're recommending that you focus on the west basin. Look at trying to address the west basin defects. That's going to be much more expensive because we're talking about rehabilitating the sanitary sewers that are owned and operated by the city. But we've found, and I'll actually get into this a little bit more later, that we need to address the private side as well, including the that extra thirteen miles of sewer main, but the thirteen miles of private laterals as well. And so that's why we call it holistic rehab. And then after the west basin, holistic rehab of the east basin. Part of the concern of what our findings with the smoke testing is when we want to disconnect these inflow sources like catch basins, we need to send that flow somewhere. And typically that would be to the storm sewers in the roadway. Not all of your streets have storm sewers where this flow can go. For example, there are three catch bases right here at the end of the cul-de-sac in Riverdale. They're connected to the sanitary system probably because there's no storm sewer system. So when the developer went in there, put those homes in, for whatever reason, they didn't put a storm water pipe. Riverdale is a pretty flat road. That water's not going to go anywhere. So somewhere along the line, someone put those catch basins in and connected them to the sanitary. So these red lines indicate where we are recommending at a high level, you're going to need to put storm sewer infrastructure in to get that water out and connected to the rest of your storm sewer system. So that's what we see here. If you have these other emissions, it means you're really close to a storm, an existing storm sewer system. So it's actually a fairly quick and a low cost connection to get it off of the sanitary and onto the storm sewers. East basin, same same situation here. These are all the same recommendations that are in the report. These figures are in the report that were included in the council packet. But you're going to need four storm sewer extensions or so, and then disconnection of all of these inflow sources. One differentiation, I failed to mention, my apologies, the light blue or the cyan color represents a private source of inflow. The yellow indicates a public source. So yellow is pretty easy. It's part of the city system anyway. You can just connect it to the to the storm sewer system. The city's going to need to make some decisions about how to address private sources of info, inflow and infiltration. And there's a number of different ways, a number of different ways communities in Oregon have done it too, and happy to to talk more about that, but that's not part of this presentation. Cost effectiveness of holistic rehab. I I mentioned this briefly. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but when we address only the sewers that are in the streets and none of the laterals, what the industry has found, and this has been true in Oregon of the programs that I've worked on, we get a, we see around a twenty percent reduction in that clean water that's getting into the system. When we add the laterals, the the private home laterals in the right away from the sewer main to like the curb or the property line, we see that double, and that just makes sense. Water is amazing. It finds its way in. And so if it's not getting in the sewer main, because we've sealed up the sewer main, that water will just travel in that gravel that the pipe is built in and go up into the side sewers and find their way in. And so that's why the importance of sealing up those side sewers. If we rehab the sewer mains and the laterals all the way up to the building foundation, if possible, which means doing lateral work, rehab work all the way as close to the homes as we can get, or the commercial facilities or the buildings, we see that go up to around sixty-five percent. This is a horrible slide. I apologize for keeping this in. This is way too much text. What I will say is what matters the most are these numbers. Let's just focus on the west basin. If we just do the city's sewer mains and manholes only and stop there, that will cost the city at a budgetary level eight point four million dollars. It's a big cost. It'll remove around one point three million gallons a day off of your peak flows. And that will equate to six dollars and forty-six per gallon removed. Okay. If we add the laterals to the right away, to the curb line, to the property line, that increases the costs understandably. But it'll also increase the reduction removed, and then the cost effectiveness actually drops to five dollars and sixteen cents per gallon removed. If we were to add the laterals all the way to the building foundations or as close to it as we can get, it increased the cost even more, but think we're already there, we're already working on those laterals. All it takes is a contractor to extend his work or her work up to those buildings. And then we get an even greater reduction, which lowers the cost effectiveness considerably. So this is, it's a key aspect of I N I work is trying to address the private sources of infiltration as well when we're doing holistic rehab. I hope that all made sense. I know this was a lot of information. Okay. And again, my my son has a piano lesson. It's this COVID world. I would have loved to be in the council chambers with all of you, but. Okay, I've just got a few more slides to run through really quickly. This is what holistic rehab would be for the west basin. The purple lines indicate where open cut is recommended because the pipes are in such bad shape, they just need to be replaced. Or we could use a trenchless technology or a less trench technology like pipe bursting, where it bursts the existing pipe open and replaces it with a new one. The lines in orange, these are city main lines or city sewers that can be rehabilitated trenchlessly using cured in place pipe. It's a technology that uses the existing pipe as a form and renews it and makes it watertight. And so you've got a mixture because of the different, the deterioration structurally in your system of using a couple of different technologies. Wherever we can, we want to use cured in place because it's much less intrusive, it's much faster and it's cheaper. But sometimes our pipes get to deteriorate beyond where it can be used effectively. But we'd be recommending the same on the laterals as well. So this is the west basin. These little dots all indicate where we had emissions from that smoke testing that also need to be addressed while we're there. Here's the east basin, and it's the same symbology. Purple indicates open cut replacement or pipe bursting. The orange is cured in place. There has been work done by the city over the years, and those are indicated in gray. Those pipes have either been replaced or rehabilitated already, and we are not recommending obviously that you do anything with those sewer mains, though the lateral still might need to be addressed. You did have one area here, it's private property, and we had a tremendous number of smoke emissions. That's what all these little diamonds are. We are not recommending that the city try to address those on their own because of the density of all that. That's all coming from a private property that we believe should be the responsibility of that private property owner to take care of all of that extra water that's getting into the system. So here is the recommended program that we're making a recommendation for the city. It's a series of four projects with interspersed with assessments in between to say, how effective are we? Were we able to actually maybe be more successful than we thought? And maybe don't need to plan for all these projects. But the first one, as I mentioned, was the inflow disconnection. As you can see, as we call it low hanging fruit, is much, it's significantly lower in cost than holistic rehab. So try to get all that clean storm water off of your system. That's the the ones that do not have, that they're already close to existing storm sewers. Then when we have to build new pipe, extend storm sewers, that's project two. And connect those inflow sources to those new storm sewers that were built. Recommending all of that happens this year with construct, design happening this year with construction next summer season. I believe that get that stays in line with the D E Q schedule recommendations that are in that mutual agreement and order. Then we recommend, let's pause. How how well did we do? How much did we address the the issues in Gladstone? So that winter in twenty-three into twenty-four, we're recommending a pause, reflow monitor and assess before the city makes these tremendous investments in holistic rehab. But if the problem still is excessive, it's still overwhelming the downstream Gladstone pump station, then this would be the next recommended project is project three. Holistic rehab of the sewer mains, manholes and the laterals as close as possible to the building foundation. We know that the private homeowners own the laterals all the way up to the sewer main, but we included all of that lateral cost in this project cost. And that can be done a variety of ways. It can be funded by the private property owners. It could be funded by the city. Again, like I said, there have been a number of other programs in Oregon that have looked at how do we do this? And how do we fund it? But that would then take place design in twenty-four and construction in two thousand and twenty-five. And again, because the west basin was worse than the east basin, we're recommending a pause. And then depending on the the results of that, recommending holistic rehab of the east basin. It's a bigger basin. It doesn't contribute as much peak I N I, and which is why it's recommended last for twenty-five into twenty-six. followed by a final assessment of monitoring and modeling. So that's your program. What we recommend is some of the key initial steps. First is funding. Obviously that is, these are large dollar amounts. And so the city's going to need to think about how do we fund this? There's a lot of opportunities right now with a lot of federal stimulus funds. There's the ARPA funds. There's new programs funded through EPA like called WIFIA loans that are very low interest. So there's a lot of opportunities if the city wants that. I think the city also needs to make a determination fairly quickly on the INI source policy and funding. I'll give two quick examples. The city of Sweet Home was under DQ MAO. I was involved with that program for a handful of years, saw them get out of that MAO. They met all the requirements of that. They ended up just making the determination to fund the laterals on their own. It was a community benefit and it was the simplest and fastest way to do that. The city of St. Helens was also under MAO. They decided to tell all the homeowners, you have problems in your lateral. We have provisions in our city code to say that you've got issues there. And you're not allowed to allow groundwater from your private lateral to get into the community public system. You need to fix it within six months or we're going to start adding a surcharge to your bill. So those are just examples. There's different ways to handle how to deal with the private INI sources. Roof drains are another great example. City of Portland's had this program for years of just fix it and we'll reimburse you $69 or $79 off of your monthly sewer bill. Just show us the receipt from Home Depot that you've got it fixed. So those are types of things that the city could be looking at. And then address the large private contributors. There's that East Basin property with the hundred plus smoke emissions that I was talking about. There's also a couple manufactured home properties in the West Basin on the far west southwest corner of the, of the basin. And that has traditionally been an area that has had issues, but it's privately owned. We did not smoke test any of it. We did not inspect any of it. And, but for all intents and purposes, they're a small neighborhood with its own collection system. And so we recommend the city look at that. Here's that, that East Basin. Again, I just wanted to highlight just the number of those, but I think I already mentioned this. I'll skip that fast. Again, I just wanted to highlight in red here, the, that all four projects, the red are indicating these are the private property things, considerations that the city is going to need to make. We've got laterals, we've got private property inflow sources. So that these projects, in order for them to move forward, the city needs to make a decision about how to deal with private property INI. And that's not an easy one to make, and I recognize that. So again, if there's any information that this council would need, happy to provide it. So I think Darren, that in a nutshell is our recommendation. This is my contact info. I'll make sure that, that this gets passed over to Darren. If you ever, any of you need to call me or reach out to me for any questions. And happy to take any questions now.
Thank you very much. You, you presented it in a way that's very easy to understand. And when you read through all of this for engineering documents, it, it gets a little overwhelming. And for those that have lived in Gladstone for a while, when they were doing the, the smoke testing, that was the days when we got a gazillion fire department calls that there was houses on fire. It was, it was, there's definitely a lot of smoke coming up. So Darren, do you have anything to add to this?
No, not really. I think what you, you need to realize with everything that Rob presented was, you know, the next steps after the report, the next two technically really three, because we want to see how the system reacts after we've done the, the repairs. We're going to, that, that would be what would should satisfy our MAO with DEQ. With that also being said, you saw the pictures, you saw everything that was involved. There's a lot more work than just satisfying the MAO. And to be a hundred percent honest with you, that's only a, a portion of Gladstone. We have other portions that are, were not part of this study that are in the Oak Lodge area and things like that, that we know we have issues with. We've got a lot of work ahead of us is really what it comes down to. So I thank you, Rob, for your presentation. It was very informative for the people who have not seen it. I've seen it a couple of times now. So that's kind of where we're at.
All right. One of the things that I wanted to mention is when I first became mayor, I was taken into a room and told that we had $200 million worth of storm sewer and water infrastructure upgrade. So these numbers may look really high, but compared to the $200 million, I was told this is actually positive. I hate to say that. Those are big dollar signs. Anyway, any questions? Counselor Tracy? Not there. We'll start with Counselor Alexander.
No, just I, I learned a lot. It was a great presentation and thanks for working with us.
Right. Counselor Tracy, any questions?
No questions, but it's, it's after reading the report, it's obvious that we do need to do something with our partners there. It's seventh day of Benas Campground because it seems to me like a lot of those fixes could be fairly fairly inexpensive. I see that you have a lot of the sewer cleanout caps that may be broken or lost. And so those could attribute to this, to the INI. So I think we probably have to have a pretty hard discussion with them, at least on the easy stuff. And then maybe a harder discussion on the, on the more difficult things. But I see that it seems to me like there's a lot going on on that one piece of property. So thank you for that, Mr. Lee.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you for the presentation. I didn't know I was going to learn so much about our infrastructure, but I appreciate the way that it was laid out. Yeah, I guess my only question is where are we going to get this money to do this? Not that you can answer that, Rob. And your son plays beautifully.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
Counselor Garlington.
Well, I, I also would like to thank you for the presentation. It was really good. I appreciated the initial basics with your home and how everything flows. And that really gave me a really good idea of how every, the photos and the graphs, they were all super helpful. I have a couple of questions and it's just because I don't understand, so I'm gonna ask. On the smoke testing, how much of the smoke testing that you did, what the percentage, I mean, I saw the large piece of property and I know that that property is mostly undeveloped, which is probably why where it sits, it sits. But of the rest of it, I'm assuming that, that everything on the flatlands that you did is everything that has a house on it and that sort of thing. And are any of those homes still on? Why is that word eluding me? They're not on the sewer system. They're on a
Septic tank?
Thank you.
Yep.
And are some of those people still on septic tanks? And is this addressing that issue at all?
No, it would not be addressing that issue. Every, the place where we insert or blow the smoke vapor into is from the, the existing sanitary sewer manholes or maintenance holes. So the manhole covers that you see in the road, we're taking those off and then using those to blow the vapor into the system. So if you're not connected, if it's a home that has a septic tank, it would not have tested those properties.
You didn't. Okay. So that, so that does not have any effect whatsoever on people. And I don't know, maybe Darren can answer for us. How many people are still on septic tanks? And, and that's not anything that we're addressing with all of this. I see a head shake. Okay, moving forward. There was a, a slide that said you were going to disconnect. And then another one that said disconnect. When you talk about disconnecting, I think to myself, okay, so where does it go when you start disconnecting things and aren't reconnecting it somewhere else?
Right. Yeah. So the place where we would love for rainwater to go is into the storm sewers. I'm going to go ahead and share this slide again.
Okay.
So a lot of homes, for instance, might have their roof. I mean, when we take what used to be nice green impermeable surface where rain could soak into the ground and we replace it with a home, all that water no longer can soak into the ground. And so it hits our roofs and then just shoots off when it goes as fast as it can over to our rivers. And so for instance, do we have our, our gutters?
Right.
And then a roof drain, a downspout. And a lot of times those downspouts splash onto a pad, like a concrete, a piece of concrete, and then just splash off into the yard. Sometimes those things go straight into the ground and we don't know where they go. But then they'll come out and a hole on the curb, for instance. So when it rains, you'll walk along, if you take a walk in a big rainstorm, you might see water shooting out from holes in the curb. That's coming from our downspouts, most likely. What happens sometimes is these, instead of going out into the roadway where they should, people connect them into their sanitary, their wastewater pipes on their property. And when that happens, all of that rainwater that's supposed to hit the roof and then get disposed of or sent out to the roadways goes right into our sewer pipes, our wastewater sewer pipes. And so all that extra clean water gets in, it takes the capacity away from those pipes that were never designed to carry that storm water. It's supposed to carry wastewater. And, and it leads to overflows downstream as well. So that's one example of how this water is getting into the system. And, and so when you're asking, when we disconnect, what we mean is taking this off of the sanitary wastewater pipe and either sending it out into the roadway, connecting it into the storm sewer, or just letting it splash out onto the ground the way nature kind of intended.
Could that be an issue for people in their homes though?
It could be, especially after this many years of potentially having it connected to their wastewater pipe. If we then just cut it off right here and let it splash onto the ground, it could cause drainage issues. We've seen programs that have had basements, like daylight basements or live-in basements. And people have said, my basement's never leaked for 30 years. Now I'm seeing water come, starting to come through the walls. So definitely there are some concerns that need to be considered by any city council when making a decision about who does what and what's the extent of it. And that's where sometimes the solution is to, rather than just have it splash out here on the ground, the private property owner could send it out into the street where there's a curb and there's a catch basin. And all that water can then flow into the storm sewers, which is why we've made the recommendation to extend storm sewers where there are none.
Okay. I think that I have to go back to a, a town hall we had. And it was long before I was even on parks. So it had to have been like eight years ago or something. It was at the high school. And they were having some flooding issues up off of, up behind the high school. And it was bad. These people were talking about, you know, the, the water coming in and everything flooding. And this town hall was, was, there was a lot of people and a lot of people with a lot of problems. So I think that that has to, we just can't even have that. I mean, to talk about disconnecting and not having a plan, even if the homeowner doesn't want us, want, even if they, I don't, I don't even know how to do it, but I guess I'd rather not ask for forgiveness. I'd rather ask for permission and make sure that, you know, somebody that maybe doesn't quite understand exactly what's going on. We just, you know, we got to cover our bases on that kind of stuff. So that, that's just in my head because I was at that town hall meeting about water and it was a big issue. And then do you have a, do you or Darren have an idea when you talk about that? One of those pockets of $16 million, what is the cost of private versus private? The part of it that's private versus the part of it's the city?
Yeah, I can share that as well. Let me do. So this slide is both the West and East Basin. The city only owns and maintains their, their sewer mains and their manholes. Any of the, the private connections are owned by the homeowner from the home all the way up to where it connects to the sewer main.
So it would be the 88,400 minus the 16 million?
That's right.
So it's about 50/50?
That's right. Which it makes sense. It's around 13 miles total in both of these basins of sewer main and around 13 miles of laterals.
Okay. That's all of my questions and I appreciate you answering them because thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Any more comments from staff? I don't see anything. So thank you very much, Rob. This was wonderful. Not that we all want to talk about sewer and storm, but it's definitely necessary. So Jackie, are you ready to step into B?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think what staff appreciates is that the city council has made infrastructure a priority. And this type of information validates why we've had to raise our utility rates. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We have a nice plan for us to follow. Darren will submit this report to DEQ. They will send their comments. And once we have that feedback, staff will put together a capital improvement plan and some proposed policy decisions to bring back to the city council for consideration. It is daunting. It's a lot of money. But again, I think the way that they've prepared the report gives us some low hanging fruit and some direct steps that we can work on to try to reduce this from being the problem that it is. So how do we fund it? The second part of this work session is to bring in Wes, because Wes also recognizes this is a regional partner. They have an advisory group that has been working with trying to find some funding mechanisms to help all the cities with this. Tonight we have Chris Story, who I'm going to bring in and to give a little bit of history of how this IGA was drafted and to go through the highlights of the draft IGA. You won't be approving this IGA tonight, but we wanted to complement the presentation with an option to help with the funding of some of our projects.
All right, Chris, you're up.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak. I have to confess that I was working on a presentation and then I realized that Mr. Lee was going to be coming before me. And I'm like, that's coming on after the Beatles. I don't need to do any presentation explaining I and I. He's going to nail it and just hit it out of the park. So I'm gonna skip the presentation for you. You're not going to see any slideshow. Rather, I thought I would just speak to the larger issues and the agreement that you've seen in the draft form that's in your packet today. So what we are recognizing is you are not alone. That study that you had in your city that, you know, smoke's coming out of the ground. It looks like the pits of Mordor. That happened in other cities too. Oregon City did a smoke test. A little challenging. Westland did a smoke test, challenging. Milwaukee did a smoke test, challenging. So we are recognizing, as you saw those spikes, that eight to 12 ratio of flows coming into the treatment plant. That is the most expensive way that you can try and handle rainwater and groundwater is to channel it into pipes and then take it down to a treatment plant where we will run it through a fairly extensive cleaning process that includes chemicals and biological treatments. And you need electricity and power. Not the way to go. So what we've actually seen and was referenced in that slide, the Mr. Lee showed that had all the different red basins, is we identified what we call pipe sheds, 19 different pipe sheds, where we're seeing excessive INI and every single community in the regional system had a problem. So what we realized is this needed a regional solution. And what our proposal is and what we've discussed with our advisory committee, and I'll note Mayor Stimple is on our advisory committee, is the basic sharing of savings that we can all realize for our ratepayers by working together. We ran numbers and said, what is the lowest cost, not for a legal jurisdiction, but for the ratepayers in addressing INI? And the answer was the cheapest thing to do for the people that are actually paying the bills is to get that ground and rainwater. is to get that ground and rainwater out of the pipes rather than channeling it down to the wastewater treatment. We will estimate can save around $120 million over the next 20 years by taking that approach. What we want to do is incentivize that work and share those savings with the jurisdictions that are doing that work. So the proposal that you see before you is an agreement that is being offered to every city that we serve, including Happy Valley and Johnson City, where we pretty much do the retail portion of the work as well. Where we will fund 33% of the cost of these projects. That will reduce INI. That is, I, I heard the question earlier, how are we going to pay for all this? And you're right, it's daunting. It's, it's a real concern. And we thought that might be a barrier to cities being able to start work on these projects. And we wanted to offer our support to help you to start marching down this path. The, the drops that we eliminate early in the, in the 20-year planning horizon accrues even greater value over time. Right? Getting the dropout now, it stays out for the whole 20 years. We're not treating that for 20 years. We're saving money. So if we can get these projects kickstarted, we're all better off for it. So what you are seeing before you is a, we're calling it a pilot agreement that for the next five years, we are offering this matching funding program for any project. So long as it's an INI reduction project, we will fund it. We're not putting a cap in the amount of dollars that we are going to put out. We are not making you compete for grants against other cities and worry about prioritization. If you are doing the work, we will fund it. We don't know if we can afford that over all 20 years. But we've taken a look at capital programs from the various cities and matched that against our capital program and available financial resources. And we can make that commitment for at least five years. And then we will be able to come back together as a, as a region and talk about if that's sustainable or something we want to continue to do down the line. And that is, I would really say, the heart of the conversation we're having around this agreement. And what we're also trying to do is set it up so that the people, you might say, most involved in the work are the ones making the, the decisions that have the greatest impact on the work. So Public Works Director Kenneth Peroli is going to be on our, is on our technical advisory team, which is a team of our Wes engineers, public works directors, city engineers. And they're the ones that are actually going to decide whether or not a project qualifies for this matching funds. So the public works directors are the ones that are going to say yes or no, because they understand the project. We didn't want it to be at, you know, a city council level or the board of county commissioners or even advisory committee. We wanted to make it a very technical exercise so that if you met the very clear standards that are in this agreement, you will receive funds for your projects. I have to admit, it was both informative, fascinating, and a bit daunting to watch Mr. Lee's presentation. So I hope that one of the takeaways that you can have for this evening is you're not alone, that we hear you and we see the problems that you want to address, and we want to help you to address them. And with that, I guess I'll just throw it open and see if you have any questions around the agreement.
Thank you very much. Counsel Alexander, any questions?
No, I'd just like to say I'm sure I speak for a lot of the community when I say we appreciate the financial assistance from you guys. That's it.
Counsel Tracy.
No questions. Thank you. And thank you, Chris, for that, for that presentation.
Counsel Hartman.
No question. Thank you, Chris.
Counsel Ripley.
No questions.
Counsel Garlington.
I was hoping Matt would, our Counselor Tracy would ask questions because he's really good at this stuff and knowing where things are missing. But when you said $120 million, is that Gladstone or is that everyone in the IGA?
That is collective regional savings for everyone that's, that's served by our system. So it's all six cities and the unincorporated area. So basically, what we did is very much like the presentation Mr. Lee did, we did a study that looked at removing 0% INI, 10%, 25%, 65% and sort of looked at the rate of return for the ratepayers, you know, whether it made sense to just expand the treatment plant so it could handle these big surges of water up to working on the laterals to homes to try and eliminate the contributions from INI into the system. And the cheapest option for the ratepayers was to go all the way 65% INI removal.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I just wanted to make that clear. I was fairly certain you meant everyone. I just wanted that to be clear. Another thing, when you're talking about meeting projects, we're seeing Gladstone's projects. We don't get to see everybody else's. I mean, we could if we wanted to dive into them further. I guess my question would be, we're talking about projects that are existing issues. This does not have anything to do with any new building or new construction that will come up during this next five years. Am I correct?
It would be any project that has an INI problem. We wouldn't anticipate new construction having an INI problem. Basically, we're defining it as areas that have a, at least greater than a four to one peaking ratio. If, as Mr. Lee mentioned, if you're at a four to one peak in our wet Western Oregon experience, that we can live with that. We've designed the treatment plant to be able to handle that. It's only if you see something exceptional where you see these crazy spikes like you saw from your summer storm where we're like, we know that there's something else going on here. And I will note, part of the conversation we have with Happy Valley is in a few fairly new subdivisions, we saw a spike like that, which was surprising because the pipes are new. And so we're actually investigating, we think somewhere along the line, an elevation got off and a manhole is getting submerged by a stream when there's a heavy rainstorm and it just flows in to the system. So being new is not a guarantee. But it's, it's far less likely than older infrastructure.
Okay, I guess where I was talking, because Gladstone has the one parcel that is, that's land. I mean, short of the, the retirement community that's on the furthest side near Kason, everything else is just land. So there has to be some of these other people that have, or some of these other cities that have just land. So I guess my question is, is if you've got a whole bunch of land and now all this, and now all of this problem was showing, but now somebody wants to develop it, is that part of all of this? I mean, are we funding new development even because there was already a problem there? Or would that be?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question, but now I would say our development standards, which we share with the city, they overlap as far as what the requirements are from surface water and sanitary sewer connection. We don't allow people to connect their, you know, downspouts into the sewer system as part of new construction. That may have been the way that a parcel was functioning previously. That is not acceptable from a development standpoint. We're not going to subsidize that. We are going to say that a cost of development is that you have to make the final product of the development adhere to current standards.
Okay, I just wanted to make that, that, okay, so I understand that part. And then, when you were talking about agreeing to five years, is that all of the projects in that list that Mr. Lee was showing us then?
The way I would frame it
As hard as we can get.
Yeah, the way I would frame it is whatever the city brings forward that you can, you can support, we'll support. So it's up to you. We're, we're not saying, this is very much a, you might say carrot not stick approach to the issue. We're saying whatever you can do, we will meet you there and support you in doing that. It could be, I mean, we have some cities that haven't yet put this on their agenda, and we're basically saying, well, for five years, whoever wants to play gets to play. And if you don't, we're going to get together as a region and talk about what are we going to do about people that haven't really been meeting their obligations to take care of their collection system. But from what I'm hearing, Gladstone is well on the path of doing great work, and we want to make sure we can support you in that.
So then I guess our next finger would be to Mr. Kenneth Peroli and saying, how confident are you that this, these projects, this list of projects will get done in that five-year timeframe in order to take advantage of your generous gift?
Yeah, so with that, I mean, we will do anything and everything that we can to get projects completed. Projects just don't start themselves, so it takes time and obviously money. But that is the goal, is to get as much done in the timeframe that we can with the IGA with Wes to minimize costs to the taxpayers. But as to say, how much we can get done in that time period, that's really difficult to say.
And Counsel Garlington, if I could add to that, I do want to be clear in that this is a pilot project because we've never done it before, right? We're all facing a challenge, so we're trying this out. That is not to say that at the end of five years, there's an absolute guarantee that we're going to stop it and no one's ever going to get an opportunity to do it again. If it's successful and it looks sustainable, I could easily see this continuing to be the model over the full 20-year planning horizon for, for projects.
Okay, so I just want to add one more very small thing. When Mr. Lee was talking about that, this, this prod, the sewer lines that he's talking about are 50-year lines. Instantly, I'm thinking to myself, that's this whole hill up off of, you know, the, the oatfield developments up above oatmeal or oat field are all right at about 50, 50-plus years old. And I'm thinking to myself, wow, we better hurry. So that's all. Thank you for all of the clarification.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't want to think about the upper part here. I just wanted to say first that five years ago, I was not only told we had $200 million worth of infrastructure to be done, but I was also told that nobody within the Storm or the Sewer District was speaking and that Gladstone and Oregon City wanted to build their own sewage treatment plant with zero experience and zero money. So the fact that we were there five years ago and now we are here talking about this incredible partnership is wonderful. And Chris, you and Greg Geist were absolutely instrumental in taking us from that horrible period of sewage timeline to where we are today. So I really, really, really appreciate it. All of the work that you do. One question that I had is, five years ago, more like four years ago, we were talking about the need to address that extra inflow instead of conserving, rehabbing, renovating. And we were talking about adding another membrane filter to sewage treatment plant that we have now. We, we decided not to go with that second membrane filter system, but to do this instead. And if I remember correctly, just making that decision saved us what, $32 million or $35 million?
It definitely saved us some money, although I do want to say that when we say 65% removal, and that's a hard target to hit in the INI world, that still means you're getting 35% and you're going to see peaks. That our current capital plan, that $120 million of savings still assumes that we will be spending hundreds of millions of dollars in the collection system, but also in expanding the wastewater treatment plant to handle some of those peak INI flows that will build up over the next 20 years. So you will still see expansion of the treatment plant to handle this issue, just not nearly as much as we would have had to if we didn't remove it in the collection system. We're actually petitioning DEQ right now. We have, we think are very environmentally supportable and regrettably appropriate approaches that don't require us basically to build entirely new treatment trains. Rather, it's, it's sort of, it's a peak wet weather structure where you can sort of ramp up the plant only for that portion when there are these spikes in wet weather events, rather than basically trying to bring entire treatment trains online. We're not 100% sure that DEQ is going to sign off on that stuff. I think you know from your negotiations around your MAO that sometimes they can be reasonable, sometimes not. But we're going to do our best to minimize the expenses to ratepayers.
One thing that I've, I've done, I don't know how many of you, is gone on a tour of the sewage treatment plant. I know that may not sound exciting to most of you, but honestly, it is incredible. What you see is such a small fraction of what's there. And that place is spotless. And those people that work there love what they're doing. It is really a, a great tour. So I highly recommend doing it. Do we have anything from staff?
Mayor, I think we have a special guest with their hand raised that'd like to say a few words if our city recorder can allow Greg Geist to speak.
He should be coming on now.
I see Natalie. So there we go.
Hi, folks. Sorry about that. I just want to say thank you very much. Chris did a wonderful job and it's just really nice to see our, the level of our cooperation, and I look forward to moving forward. That's it. Sorry.
Oh, thank you, Greg, for your leadership. You have done an amazing job. You've held lots of hands and helped us get through this, this process over the past five years. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Tammy.
All right, anything else from staff?
Just in closing, I will let you know the city attorney has reviewed the draft IGA. We have no concerns. And in assuming with head nods, then we will put this on the consent agenda for February 8th city council meeting for you to consider.
Wonderful. Well, I think that wraps it up for tonight. So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Tracy and seconded in tandem by Counselors Garlington and Alexander to adjourn. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at 6:37 PM. Have a good evening, everybody.